All right, so this is the June 22 meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. It is a regular meeting. Deafened to share staff tonight is Diane Glomboski and me, Deb Jones. There is the opportunity to address the commission under Public Communications. If you'll need to raise your hand in order to do that, so on an Apple device, you can find that at the top of your screen on a PC at the bottom and for a phone, it is star nine.
All right, I'll call the Planning and zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is our roll call. Appears that we have everyone present except for alternates Fitfall and Zupari. Moving on, next item is approval minutes of previous meetings. Oh, make a motion to approve the minutes of our June 8 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, does anyone have any corrections for the minutes of June 8?
The only thing that I would say is that there was a lot of discussion about this application and I don't see it included in the minutes. I just want to make sure that it's the one thing in particular was the mirror, which was, I had emailed Deb afterwards and said that I was not, you know, demanding that, but it seems like that a lot of these technical items. I don't know if they should be addressed in the minutes or not.
Well, if they were, yeah. Did you have specific items?
Well, it's just, I mean, there was so much discussion. It would seem as if there should be something that would at least allude to the the, you know, the driveway possibly changing the
Well, that's in the motion, isn't it?
Yes. I mean, if everyone else is comfortable with it, I just, when I read it, I thought that there was so much discussion that it would have been helpful if someone was looking at this to know all the things that were discussed. And it does say in here that the mirror would be added in, in this in the minutes, but then we discussed not having it.
Well, that it was what it said that it was in the presentation from
Yeah, I realize it's just kind of like if I read this, I would think that there should be a mirror there. I've been only read this. I don't know, maybe just the sentence that would say that there was, you know, there was quite a bit of discussion in regard to, I don't know what many of the issues that came up, including, and then just list them.
No, I think
But if everyone else is comfortable, I'm comfortable. I just, I thought that it could have used a little more. Maybe that's not a, not needed. I don't hear anyone else speaking, so.
Usually don't list out many technical items.
Yeah, no, I realize.
Maybe we should send some of them, but but we don't. It's just covered in, in this case in the recording, but you're right. It seems like something should have been in the meeting minutes. And I agree, in the end, we decided not to do the mirror is my understanding too.
So maybe that should be clarified, just.
Add a statement that, yeah. They had one statement in there in the last paragraph on page five. To say various technical items were identified, including deletion of the, of the mirror. Would that make sense?
I mean, for a small application, we spent a lot of time on it. Well, but I think that we got better result. Hopefully, I don't know what the, what the town engineer decided, but that's all.
All right. So does anyone have any other corrections?
Just that there, there was something about the kiosk that was removed. I guess they took it out entirely. But was that still on the plan?
No, they'd taken, they'd taken it off.
Off the plan.
All right, so it came off the plan. Okay.
So their partner have to provide follow up here for the employee that's conducting.
Bigger umbrella. A bigger umbrella.
Right, well, no other corrections then. We'll vote on the, the motion to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. The next item is approval of the minutes of June 14th. Special meeting, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting on June 14th. Is there a second?
No second.
Does anyone have any corrections?
On this one, I, I'm a little just that in the second paragraph, in the last sentence, says they are open to having a pre-application review with Restler at a regular meeting. I thought that, that Commissioner Zod had specifically said that he didn't want to do that. Am I mistaken?
I didn't say that I didn't want to do it and said it might look bad if we, if we did that as part of how we're coming up with, what we're coming up with. As it stands now, that was kind of early on, as it stands now, since we kind of put the kibosh on doing anything dramatic. I'm not sure it would be harmful. With the one exception that I'd say that right now, this says, all this says is they would consider zone change to a higher residential density. The only one I heard mentioned was, what I mentioned was that kind of perhaps increasing part of the property up to, are you, of the RU 80 up to RU 40.
That's what I understood.
Somebody mentioned 20, but I don't know.
Well, some of it, most of it, quite a bit of it is adjacent to 20. So a lot of the property that they just bought was already 20, so I thought that would be okay. And it just isn't fully utilized at 20. And that's what I said, it would be fine to have 40 on the east side. Well, that's all I ever said. And I think if someone wants to come and talk to us about that, after we've already said, that's about all we want to do. I, I think that's harmless.
Well, I, but I, I just, you know, what happened in the meeting, though, I think was at that point, we had not, we had not discussed that at length, I don't think. And if we had did at that, at the meeting, we had said, you'd said that you didn't want to do that, but.
You mean do what?
Have a meeting with Restler?
Pre-application review with an applicant for a property that hasn't been zoned. I mean, that would be my concern is that we, and it's, and it was the way that I understood the conversation in the meeting, that these minutes reflect.
Yeah. I think I wasn't alluding to that, is that? Is that valid? Do we ever do any pre-application meetings ever?
It is something that's allowed statute. Although the statute's very clear that the, you're not bound by whatever, okay, in a pre-application meeting.
But would that occur before or after zoning has been established?
Well, depends what the application is. I mean, it could be a pre-application to discuss a possible zoning amendment.
Yeah, see, that's, that's where I have a concern. Having a conversation with a, with a potential applicant, not the applicant for a parcel that, and I'm just, I'm just saying this, it doesn't make any difference as far as the meetings go. But that's what I understood from what I heard Mr. Zod say.
Yeah. Well, should we just delete that? Because
I would say so.
Because it, you know, the results of the meeting are binding. There was no votes taken.
No, I realize. I just want to send the message.
No, I, I don't have a pro, I just wonder whether we should delete it. And basically
I don't think it accomplishes anything, that last line.
No, well, why don't we just delete it?
Yeah, that, that's how I would feel because we, that was, I mean, as a reflection of what was said at the meeting, that was not said at the meeting.
The way we left the meeting, I literally recall that we left the meeting saying that the next thing is for Restler to come, come with us for some kind of a proposal. So coming to us with a proposal is not a pre-application per se, but we're okay to see a proposal.
Well, they could make a presentation, I mean.
Right. As opposed to just try to
Not a review. It's not a review them. It's a presentation. But why don't we just delete it?
I, I would be more comfortable with that.
Because I think that they, toward the end of the meeting, people were just talking and there was no consensus or anything.
That could be.
Other than what was written before, you know, that to leave it as RU with some potential change of density. Keep it very general. Why don't we do that?
Thank you. That's all that I had.
Nobody picked.
Also in that second paragraph, is that the way we wanted to say this? The commission agreed that it was not important to mandate the reuse of the existing buildings? It's like
Well, it's not necess, not important, was not necessary to.
Not a necessary to make, to reuse or maintain, right?
Right.
I want to say not necessarily to mandate them being retained. It's, it's not used for them to be retained.
Right.
Necessary to retain. Or use.
Deb, I'm still getting cross talk and I, my computer keeps saying Sue Sutherland is talking.
Yeah.
No, I can hear that too.
She's unmuted now. Did you want to speak, Sue?
Well, you know what, why don't I, if you don't mind, I could dial in on my iPad and I'll turn off everything else. Because that worked before.
Okay.
My phone, yeah, my phone's bothering everybody, so I can get rid of that.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll, we'll see you in a minute.
Do you want me to wait for a vote on this or?
Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay.
I'll go back and eat my dinner.
He wasn't kidding.
You hear that clinking?
Okay, hello, sorry about that.
In the blue room.
Trying to, I, I know what you, I'm not exactly presentable, so.
You can turn off your video.
Oh, yeah, I know, but you might see me doing this. It's just my curlers. Okay, hold on a second. There we go. Okay.
And nobody picked up the typo on the last page. Right above the la, on the last, on the adjournment, motion is misspelled.
Yeah, certainly is.
We left that one for you, Jeff.
Yeah, my page is screwed up here. So we're gonna make those, those two changes and so does anyone have any other corrections? Just the two, two changes in the typo. All right, so then we'll vote on approving the special meeting minutes of, for June 14th. Yes, corrected. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next item is Public Communications. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report?
I got an email from Roseanne Katusky, which just said FYI, and then it included a link to a article in the Connecticut Examiner. I pretty much tell people to communicate through staff and then staff will tell me, but I didn't feel like emailing Roseanne and asking her to do that in the future. Anyway, there you go. I can send it to staff if they need that article. I'll send it along anyway.
Yeah, go ahead and send it.
That same note, I believe, was posted in the Nextdoor app.
Yeah. It was a good write-up.
Yep.
So anyone else have anything? Does staff have any communications? I don't know if you wanted to do the one tonight or talk about it later, or talk about it at staff.
Okay, we'll do it under staff. Sure.
Because there's discussion about that. So does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
Yep, couple of folks with their hands up. Let's see, first is Jeff Bev Surf.
Hey, let me unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, so I won't, I hope I won't be too long, but the first thing I wanted to do was thank the commission for the excellent workshop last week and for the extremely judicious decision they made not to change the zoning regs, which I think are actually really quite fine, and I'll explain that a little bit later. And I think it's really more and more important. It'd be, I'm living in downtown Mystic now, right across from the new parking lot that you approved. And I'll talk about that first, actually. I'm, I'm good friends with my neighbor Leo, who, who owns the Harp and Hound. And I love the extension that the state allowed him to put out in the street with the cinderbox, little grass skirts and little lights. And it has humanized the entire street, the bar and everything else. It's fun to have people out there and it mainly has slowed down traffic, which is really great because when I have to come out of my driveway, I'm absolutely terrified. People are driving all over town way too fast and everyone I know is absolutely terrified of what's going on on the roads. But probably I should address the town council and ask them to do something about, you know, policing, ticketing, whatever, all the speeders. But in the future, I hope you're going to bear in mind that this traffic situation is getting, you know, really out of hand. I've also noticed that if cars are going to come in from Main Street to turn into that parking lot, there's only room for about two or three cars to wait to get into the parking lot. Assuming a couple of people are getting out and getting back in, if cars are piling up to wait, they're going to clog up all over at one. And this is not necessarily a problem with the plan you've approved, or the idea to have a parking lot is just that Mystic is, is becoming completely out of control. I don't know if you saw, probably not, there's an article in New York Post from a couple of days ago. A long article detailing in exquisite detail how wonderful, lovely downtown historic Mystic is with every restaurant, every this and that and the other thing that every single New Yorker should probably want to rush up to and visit. So we have a problem and I will address that later. I'm just putting the bug in your ear. We're in big trouble here, you know, it's, it's out of control. So anything you all can do, and I know your heart's in it because your experience, you've been doing it for 20 years. You know the drill, you're stuck in that same traffic yourselves. Anything you can do to help us out at any point along the way, including, I would say, putting things like street, you know, speed bumps along certain streets and traffic slowing devices, like maybe little roundabouts with flowers in them so that forces people to round about and slow down. Anything we can do to slow them down would be really appreciated by the residents. Because I have friends now who say they don't even want to come to Mystic in the summer anymore. In fact, they're extending that to the spring and fall because it's just completely unbearable. Now, when, when your favorite part of town or one of them, the Haley Farm, I think, is the favorite part of town, becomes unbearable to your local residents, you know, there's something that we're doing wrong. And I'm afraid that really completely falls in the hand of the council sending policy. And you all, the planning department, who are doing a great job and you really are a firewall against, you know, too much development in a, in a space, in an area that was laid out hundreds of years ago where the roads are small and where that's not going to change because we have too many houses. So essentially, that's pretty much all I had to say, except to thank you again and, and urge you to keep up the good work.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Nellie Miller.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commissioners. This is Penny Miller and I live at 56 Hancock Drive. I am gratified that the Planning and Zoning Commissioners at last Monday's special workshop on the Mystic Oral School zoning were unanimous in their opinion that the zoning of the property should remain low-density residential rather than being rezoned to accommodate a high-density development such as the one proposed by Restler. I was not expecting this outcome, given the three earlier workshops beginning in March of 2020, in which the Planning and Zoning Commission considered drafts of zoning texts prepared by the Horstley Witten Group, which were written for the, expressly for the purpose of allowing a mega-development. I also wonder why the town's plan of conservation and development was not brought to bear on this controversy over the Mystic Oral School earlier. It would seem that the Office of Planning and Development Services, in its support for the Mystic River Bluffs project, has been foiled by the town's own plan. Is it not in the Office of Planning and Development Services remit to implement Groton's plan of development, of conservation and development? Is it not their responsibility to be guided by and to follow the town's plan of conservation and development? I am confused about these matters, but I thank you for hearing the many residents who spoke up to oppose the mega-development and who continue to advocate for reasonable and responsible development of the oral school. Development that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and with preserving nearby green spaces. Thank you.
Let's see, Dan Brown.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I just wanted to tell you, thank you that you have held fast with the zoning of the town, which was probably very wise in the first place. And I appreciate your consideration of that area and of the town of Groton. Beth Tillman is also sharing this one computer screen, so she'll probably want to be up after I. Thank you very much.
Is that okay with you? If I speak now, this is Beth Tillman. Good evening, Commissioners. I too would like to second that I am ecstatic that you are holding fast according to the plan of conservation and development. I am, however, somewhat disturbed by the fact that there is no official recording of the workshop meeting, which I feel was pivotal in establishing what zoning regulations are governing the Mystic Oral School. If the Connecticut Examiner had not made a recording, which has now been adopted and published on YouTube, and I believe is now on the town website, we would be in a he said, she said sort of debacle. And actually, it's interesting from the minutes to see that to a certain extent, that is occurring. My recollection and my eight pages of notes indicate that the commission had decided to adhere to the zoning. And on the two oral school parcels, it is RU 80. It is only on the two additional parcels that Jeffrey Restler purchased directly on Cal Hill Road that it is RU 20. I would be very unhappy to see any increased density allowed on that property as there are so many varied uses to which an RU 80 can be put. Sue Sunderland in the workshop listed, I think, probably 20 different ways that there can be add-ons to the residential aspect of the property. I would be very excited to see that that is what the ultimate decision is by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate all that you do for our town. Thank you. Let's see, Hal Robb.
Good evening. This is Hal Robb. I live at 7 Hancock Drive in Mystic. And I guess I would like to say thank you to the commission for the informative and, and wonderful outcome of the workshop last week. I just wanted to say, I particularly appreciated the commissioner who suggested that when Restler comes to make a presentation to the commission, that the presentation should only be about how Restler is going to deal with the property with the existing zoning and not an attempt to persuade the commission to change the zoning. Again, I thought that was a wonderful stroke of good fortune as far as I was concerned. And again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. And I will note that Kevin has joined us at 7:29. Let's see, Echo Welt.
Hello, this is Becca Well, 32 Boulder Court. I know that I'm not supposed to ask questions now, but I did want to ask if you all received my email from last week after the workshop?
Yes.
You did, okay. All right, then I will, I will read the other thing I wrote instead. Give me just a second. I have attended more local meetings over Zoom this last 18 months than I have in my life. School board, town council, PTA, church outreach and planning and zoning. And I have learned a lot about agendas and regulations and politics and community issues. And these meetings in particular have taught me about how much knowledge and experience matter, especially in local issues. Thank you for using your expertise to benefit the community. You have my respect and admiration for the time you put in and the consideration you give to the decisions you are called upon to make. Thank you.
All right, thank you. See, Jeffrey Richards. Mr. Richards? Is unmuted. You know what, I'm going to put him back to an attendee and then bring him back in again and see if that works. Right, Jeffrey Richards?
Now he's muted.
Let's see. Yeah, you are muted. Okay, that's good. Now you're unmuted, appears.
Just hearing static from him.
Yeah, we, we cannot hear you.
Don't know why.
Okay.
I'll see what I can do here.
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
We can.
Oh, marvelous. Okay, I'm sorry for that. Oh, marvelous. Okay, I'm sorry for that, uh, uh, Zoom issues. Uh, I, I just have a simple, uh, comment for you and that is that.
Uh-oh, we can't hear you. We're back to static again, I'm afraid. I'm, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, we, we can't hear you. Um, if you'd like, um, you can certainly send me an email and I will get it out to the commission. Um, let's try one more time unmuting. All right, you're unmuted now. No, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Send me an email with your thoughts and I'll get it out to the commission. All right, uh, and that is it for folks asking to speak to the commission tonight.
Deb on, uh, Genevieve Surf's comments, can they be forwarded to the traffic commission?
Yes.
Since they're really not a planning issue, but I think the town, somebody in the town should be aware of the concerns. All right, then we'll move on to subdivisions. We have on subdivision 0606 Maple Glen subdivision, request for open space acceptance.
Yes, this subdivision was approved in 2006. Had 14 lots, um, all of them with street frontage. There was no road. Uh, there was a 20-acre piece of open space, um, that the Parks and Rec Director is now asking the town to take into ownership. So I've included in your packet, uh, the subdivision plan as well as a GIS map of where this is located off of Pleasant Valley Road North, Gunji Womp Road and Briar Hill Road.
Does anyone on the commission have any concerns with, uh, acceptance of the open space? And I'll ma- make a motion then for the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend, I guess it's the town council?
That's correct, recommend acceptance to the town.
The town accept the open space for Maple Glen subdivision. Is there a second?
Like, Michael silently seconded.
I would second that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Zod.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, no vote on the motion to approve acceptance of the, uh, or recommend acceptance of the open space. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Question is carried unanimously. And moving on to site plans, we have a SIT 2010 Little Girl Marine at Zero and Six Casino Road. See applicant, uh.
Yeah. Do you want me to promote them, Diane? Let's see. There anyone else with your team tonight, Greg?
Uh, yes, Andy Giblin should be there. Brian Burdick.
Brian Burdick, hold on.
And maybe, um, that's it, that's gonna speak.
Yeah.
Okay. Greg, I'm putting you to a panel so you can share your screen.
Uh, good evening, my up, yes.
You're up.
Good evening, my name's Greg Fetis with Fetis Engineering. Happy to, happy to be before the, uh, commission tonight regarding this project. Uh, we did, uh, before ZBA and I think we presented a little bit of it to you before that for a, uh, at least a requirement of the town. So, uh, I'm representing Little Girl Marine. Uh, and it basically, it's a, uh, I guess what I would call a textbook use for the WWD zone. It's a kind of a mini, uh, mystic, uh, or a mini mystic seaport. It's basically a, a, a wood boat facility that's gonna basically, uh, restore and fix and, and, and refurbish wood boats, uh, sailing vessels. Uh, they're, uh, mostly sailing vessels. I shouldn't say all sailing vessels, but, uh, there's, um, and it's a, it's a, it's a low, it's a, I would say a low use. It's not like a traditional marina where you have hundreds of boats going in, uh, in the spring and hundreds of boats coming out in the fall. This is a very small site. So let me, I can share my screen, Deb. Uh, so it's located, uh, the property, two properties are located on Casino Road. Just before the Harborview Landing, which is the, uh, the, the new project or the new, uh, yeah, I guess the new project down at the end of Casino Road, which is, uh, four or five, uh, cottages, um, developed by Matt McCormick. So the end of the, uh, the end of the road is, is basically in the startup. Uh, that project is right where my cursor is. So you can see on the, on the, this is the cover sheet of the, uh, the plan set we've submitted. Uh, there's basically three buildings located on Six Casino Road. And then a, some parking and, uh, maneuvering storage area across the street on, on Zero Casino. Uh, there's been a determination that the two are gonna kind of act as one property. So there's a, a proposed storage shed, a proposed covered work slip, which basically a boat can come right in, uh, and be covered, uh, still floating and be covered and be worked on. Um, and additionally, a boat, a proposed boat shop. Uh, so more of the longer-term projects, uh, could be six months, could be a year. Would be done inside the proposed boat shop. There's also a thousand-square-foot apartment, uh, located in the boat shop on the second floor. And it kind of shift, there's a lot of information that we, uh, submitted and, in response to, uh, staff's comments. So I'm just kind of gonna, kind of gonna go through the plan set. A couple other exhibits we'd like to show you, then, uh, Andy and, and Brian are gonna speak just kind of on some of the details of what they do on a day-to-day basis. And then if there's any, uh, questions, uh, we can answer those. Uh, so this was the existing, uh, parcels, uh, prior to removal of the house and the garage. Um, there was a residential house on the property. Like some existing docks, uh, that existing haul-out spot was always there. And you can see on here, the flood zone, uh, there's a couple different flood zones happening here. But the majority of the site is in the AE-10, a little bit in the VE-14 and a little bit in the VE-13. Uh, there's been new, there's sewer line that runs down the street and then the new water line, um, was put in last year, uh, in new, new services for our, our project. Uh, this is the site plan, uh, which basically, I'm just gonna go over it in detail. We did receive several variances regarding, um, and I can go through those if you want. Uh, we, uh, submitted a, an exhibit that showed, or actually it's the, the actual variance approval. Uh, that was submitted, but I can go over that if necessary. But again, this, uh, it's gonna blow this up just a little bit. So we'll start with the storage shed. It fits about four boats. It's 60 by 80, uh, 4,800 square feet. This is kind of the, the area where there'll be a little bit of storage, but also, uh, a boat would come in kind of for routine maintenance for the, a few days. Uh, but the longer-term stuff would happen in the boat shop. And then, uh, the covered work slip is located here. Uh, basically a boat can come in, would be tied to the dock, the floating docks here and then can be, uh, maneuvered into the work, uh, covered work slip. And that's 32 by 65. And then the boat shop, uh, located here is 88 by 30. And then the thousand-square-foot apartment above, uh, in access, um, kind of a, I'm gonna show you a turning radius plan, uh, that basically shows how all these doors are accessed and how much maneuverability we need, but between the two properties. We don't need it often, but we need it throughout the property. And that's, it's a good reason, it's one of the main reasons why we ask for so many variances regarding landscaping and so forth, which we did receive. This plan kind of also shows our perimeter, uh, buffer, which basically goes around the three sides of the site, um, to the west or to the east, uh, to the north and to the west. Um, and then you have a tidal wetland and then the railroad tracks to the north. If tidal wetlands for the most part on both sides on the west. And then on the east is the Harborview Landing, uh, complex. Um, we all also, I'm gonna associated parking, uh, four spaces located on Six Casino. Um, in the balance, 10, 10 spaces that are required are located over on Zero, uh, with a loading space, located in front of the boats, boat shop. This is the grading and utilities plan. It was a well-thought-out grading plan, although it doesn't look like there's a lot of grades on here. The site on Six Casino is basically flat. Um, and I'm gonna go over, uh, we're utilizing the entire area with the exception of the buildings as, uh, detention for, for stormwater. And then if, for whatever reason, our stormwater system, which I'm gonna go over that in more detail, uh, when I get to that sheet. Whenever that fills up, it would kind of overflow, uh, to the perimeter landscaping. There's a five-foot, uh, five-foot planted vegetated, uh, buffer on both sides. And it'll also run, uh, sheet flow across Casino Road, uh, towards, ultimately towards another buffer, uh, and ultimately towards the tidal wetland. So again, as I stated earlier, there's sewer and water located in Casino Road. Uh, they're only getting, uh, well, the sewer is only getting tied into the boat shop. Uh, that's the only place that will have, uh, sanitary facilities. Uh, the water will be tied here in, into the boat shop also. And then we'll be running, uh, water out to the storage shed, out to the docks, kind of a normal, uh, marina setup. We'll also have a couple spigots, uh, across the street. We, we do have a service that was put in for across the street. We'll have electrical outlets over there, um, again, to be utilized for, uh, you know, very minor, um, washing and boat, boat maintenance. There's a bike rack, which I forgot to mention, that's located, um, across the street. Uh, we have two required parking spaces for the bikes, so that'll be handled over there. We are taking the overhead, uh, wires for electric, uh, and phone and cable and putting it underground. There's a utility pole that was already put in down here, uh, towards School Street about halfway. Um, that, that pole is in, so we're gonna be running underground utilities down to the very end and those two, all the wires will come down between the, uh, between the two poles. So there'll be no interference. We'll be moving boats with, uh, sail, you know, sailboats with mass, uh, potentially across, crossing Casino Road. So, uh, and one thing I kind of forgot to mention, big picture, and, and Andy and Brian will go into this a little more detail. This is meant to be a replica of a 1920-ish, um, facility. So you really wouldn't see, uh, kind of the, the, the newer stuff you see on a lot of developments. Um, we're trying to basically make it look like it, make it look like it wa- looked back in the twenties. So part of that is that, uh, no, no, no above-ground utilities. Or above-ground electric or, or cable or phone. But we will have two, uh, we're gonna try to reuse those existing poles. We're gonna move them back onto our property, give Eastmans to the, um, to the town. But we are putting up two kind of, uh, replica streetlights to replace the two lights that are there now. Um, and those I believe have been approved by, um, Public Works. Uh, so that's the plan for that. Let's see, is there anything else on this? I think, uh, I think that's it for the grading and utility plan. Uh, erosion control will have, the entire site right now on the, on the Six Casino side is basically anti-tracking pad. Uh, but we'll be, uh, once we start construction of the site, we'll be putting an anti-tracking pad in on both sides. Um, there's basically cell fence, uh, that goes basically all the way around the site. And again, the site is very flat. And ultimately, uh, that's how we're gonna control stormwater. Uh, a flat site that can, that's made out of crushed stone that can retain the water. And we kind of go through the construction sequence and all the specific notes and so forth that are required. This is a landscape we original, landscape plan we originally put, put forth for the, uh, ZBA, which kind of highlights some of the variances we requested. You know, typically there's, there's landscape required on both sides of the road, except where there's curb cuts. So our site's kind of unique where we basically have open curb cut all the way across. Uh, so we did get all the variances we asked for, um, and we did propose this five-foot vegetated strip all the way around. I'm gonna just show you some, we had a landscape architect kind of tune those up for, uh, for this meeting. So there's more detail on that. She went into great detail on, uh, all the different areas. And basically we're trying to create a buffer that looks like it's been there naturally or normally or, you know, all, all along. Not something, uh, so all. Not something, uh, so all plants will be plants that have either are currently there and be supplemented with additional plants that might have been there, uh, back in the twenties. And again, I'll, I'll get to that plan shortly. Uh, some of our, uh, building height calc- calculations, uh, building coverage. Some of the other detailing, I'm just gonna blow up the detailing on the parking and the drainage, and I'll just go over that quickly if there's any questions. Again, I'd be happy to answer it. So there's two different areas. One's a kind of a non-detention area, which is the zero casino. Uh, the detention area is a, uh, a crushed stone base, uh, that's level, so it's, um, fifteen inches of clean crushed stone. Uh, there'll be peystone swept into the top, and then the surface may be substituted with a, with a shell. But basically, uh, every drop of rain that falls either on the rooftops, um, or the ground itself, uh, will be handled by, uh, this flat parking area. So there's, there's considerable amount of storage here. It can handle about the first two and a half inches of rainfall. Uh, typically, we normally look to do about one, the first inch. Uh, so that's not taken into account any infiltration. Uh, we do have the underlying soils are sandy, fine sandy, uh, soil, so we do expect some. But obviously, there's, uh, mean-high water, so the tide plays a role. Uh, we are at elevation five, as I stated earlier, mean-high water, I believe is at zero point seven. Uh, so there's about four, four-plus feet of, from the surface of the parking, which is again, flat for the entire side of six, uh, down to mean-high water. So we have considerable amount of storage and a considerable amount of area to be, to infiltrate into the ground. Uh, but if it, successive storms or, or, you know, coastal flooding, uh, inundates, and it's above the five-foot elevation, it will, uh, you know, it will, well, if it's above the five-foot elevation, everything is gonna be inundated. Um, but if we do get additional rain, it will flood, uh, the buffer on both sides and go across the street to zero and run ultimately, through that buffer and then into the tidal wetland, um, as it does today. Uh, some of the details, planting details, uh, and that's pretty much it for the site plan package. I'm just gonna show you quickly just the turning radius plan we submitted. Um, this is the actual truck, uh, which we detailed here. Um, but basically, we need access for, for the doors all the way across the storage shed. Uh, we need to get in here. There's gonna be a rail system that you can bring a boat in, uh, the way they used to back in the twenties. It's on a rail and just bring it right into the storage shed. Um, there's also gonna be potential for getting back in here. Uh, it's gonna be a, maybe a small crane here that's gonna move stuff around. Need access to the, the covered work slip and then the boat shop. Uh, you can see the, we need to get in there. Uh, basically, again, pulling up and backing into the boat shop. Uh, so that's kind of why we need it pretty much wide open both sides of the street. And again, the, you could see the, going through the parking, but however, we'll have control of the parking. Uh, this is not a marina where you have hundreds of cars on a weekend. Um, very, very small compared to the others um, in the neighborhood. Uh, again, the landscape plans, uh, there's five areas that are outlined. Uh, she went into detail on all the areas. We can talk about any of them if you'd like. But again, they're, they're pretty well detailed. Uh, this is a three-D rendering, uh, looking from the railroad tracks out to Mystic Harbor or Mystic River. Uh, you can see this, of four-bay storage. This is the boat, uh, ship, us, covered work slip and the boat storage. Um, and and their historical replicas and, and Andy and Brian can explain some of the reasons why you see what you see on the, uh, on these buildings. Um, this is a view looking towards the railroad tracks, so what, what it's gonna look like. Here's the rail system going into the storage shed, the covered work slip, um, and then the, uh, the boat shop. We do have architectural plans, but I think the renderings probably show them pretty accurately. Uh, I can, again, get to any questions regarding any of these drawings. Uh, I think there was one letter submitted from, uh, that's on, that's in the, uh, that's in the folder. A couple emails came late today, so I'll just read them quickly. Uh, one was to the Grotton Planning and Zoning. Dear, this is from Jeff Marshall, uh, Mystic Shipyard. Dear Commission, want to express my full support for the plans and site plan proposed by Little Goal Marie. As a majority property owner on Willow Point and owner of Mystic Shipyard, I believe that the Little Goal project as submitted will only enhance our Willow Point community. Be a great. I think it says addition, but I can't see it because a great addition to the Casino Road changes over the past few years. The project was well thought out and will be a wonderful asset to our community. Sincerely, Jeff, Jeffrey Marshall. The other ones from Harborview Landing, it's actually sent to me directly. Dear Greg Fettis, purposes letters address the sidewalk. I really do not believe a sidewalk is necessary for this road project. Road slash project, sidewalk with dead end of the west at tidal wetlands, it could not be extended. Sidewalk would be on private property. It's my understanding that there will be a limited activity on the site, unlike a buzzy, busy or bustling marina. And for, I do not believe we have many sidewalks in Willow Point neighborhood. Uh, please let me know if I can help with this in any way on this endeavor. Sincerely, Matt McCormick, founder of Harborview Landing. Um, I did, uh, forget to talk about was the waiver request for not to have sidewalks on this property. Maybe outline the reasons. Uh, one, it's probably just biggest from our standpoint is that it's just not appropriate for this kind of development back in the twenties. Um, there, it's not on the comprehensive sidewalk plan. And it does, dead end, it would dead end without the, ever being extended because of tidal wetlands on, uh, to the west on both sides of the street. Um, and it basically would end at the other end of the property, uh, at, uh, Harborview Landing. And again, the activity, although we presented what looked like a very busy turning radius plan. Uh, and I'll let those guys speak to how, how much real activity there's gonna be on the site, uh, move, moving boats around. It's more that we need to move them when we need to move them as opposed to every day. It's not an everyday activity. Not sure if there's anything I missed that staff would like me to address quickly, or we can move on to Andy and Brian.
You complete your presentation, um, and then I would lift it to staff.
Well, Greg, can you, can you address the, um, the FEMA issues with the buildings? The design of the buildings according to FEMA?
Sure. So, uh,
And also the, um, underground propane tank?
Yep. So, uh, two of the buildings are located, uh, the storage building and the boat shop are both located in the AE zone. Uh, they're both water-dependent uses, which gives us a little bit of lenient, leniency regarding design. Um, so there's, uh, storage building is basi- basically just that storage. So there'll be nothing below the flood elevation. Regarding, uh, mechanicals or anything like that. It's not heated, it's not air-conditioned. Um, the boat storage building, uh, does, and I think they both have flood venting on it, double, they both have flood venting, uh, which is required in an AE zone. Um, boat storage building or boat, not storage building. The boat shop itself, everything mechanically is located above the flood elevation. Uh, the apartment is fully above the flood elevation. Um, so they are all designed in accordance with, with FEMA. The, uh, covered work slip is actually in a B-zone, uh, so that will have, uh, breakaway walls, uh, will be designed, um, at the wall, the, the walls will, uh, break away. But again, we have some flexibility because it is a, uh, a water-dependent use. Uh, but all the buildings will meet FEMA's regulations. And the pro, uh, let me go back to, so the propane, uh, tank is being installed underground. Uh, located here, which would be, I guess, be the southernmost corner of the property, southwestern corner of the property. Uh, it's five-hundred gallon tank. It'll be piped underground into the, into the boat shop. Uh, we met with fire marshal and, uh, it is allowed adjacent to a property line that cannot be basically built upon. This is a title, for the most part is tidal wetlands. Um, you can kind of see the two flags here, seven or eight, it kind of pulls away there. So we do have a bit of upland there to, to place that. There'll be some taller protection. Uh, but this is a, a, again, of, of, we do have access along this side of the property to get back in this area. Uh, but it's not a high-use area. Um, that's really the only place we felt we could put this gas tank that would, uh, kind of meet our needs and, and be, uh, allowed per code. And we do have detailing on there for the whole downs meeting FEMA, uh, similar to what you just saw at Central Hall. Relatively recently for Central Hall. I don't know if Andy and Brian want to speak, if there's any additional questions for me, or we can come back after they speak.
Well, if they have something to say, they should, yeah, it's part of the presentation, they do it now. Then we'll turn it over to the staff and then to, uh, the commission for any questions.
Excellent.
And my name is Andy Giblin, eighteen William Street, New York, Connecticut. And I appreciate the opportunity to share with the commission what we hope to do at Six and Zero Casino Road, which we think it's a very unique use on a unique site in a very unique zone. So, um, we have been restoring and rebuilding vintage racing sailing yachts since the early eighties. Our first shop was in Stonington, Connecticut, in a small barn, and now we're located on Flanders Road in the boat barns um, on Noike Marine Services property. It's right next to, uh, Whittle's Cornfield. Uh, we truck the boats in now from either Mystic or Noike, and that's where we take them completely apart and reconstruct them. Um, we primarily worked on Hirschoff, uh, sailboats, and that was the preeminent, premier manufacturing company. Uh, manufacturer of racing yachts from the eighteen eighties to World War Two. Best known for string America's Cup defenders. There's actually a museum in Bristol, Rhode Island that celebrates the legacy of that company. And we've been privileged enough to, to, to work on some of the boats that are now on display up there. So what we do is, it's very much a, a quality versus quantity business model. We work on very few boats at a time, normally one, for very committed customers, and this is a passion of theirs. We have a very small talent and crew. As Greg mentioned, some of our projects take months, some, believe it or not, years. Um, we never thought we'd be able to have a waterfront facility, but, um, now that we're joined with Little Goal Marine, we hope to bring what we do Flanders Road to the waterfront. And now we have a waterfront element. We do, we do some commissioning services, that is, we take care of a few of the boats for our very special customers. So, some of the relationships go back thirty years with these people. Um, we take their boats in in the fall, take them apart. In the spring, we put them together, modernize paint, put the sails on, engines are running, the pantries are stocked. So again, what I'm trying to, um, convey, this is a very special, uh, business model with a very few boats. Um, our customers love Mystic, so we're now, we're able to invite them to come and stay at the dock. We, we hope to be a venue for some visiting yachts at times, and we even host a very small racing event in the fall. We'd like Little Goal Marine to, um, be, be the host of that. It's very important to us that this complement Mystic, Mystic and its maritime traditions and appearance, as well as the skills and crafts that, um, are, are common in this area and Mystic is well-known for. We hope when you come down West Mystic Ave or you go by on, on the Mystic River and you look at Little Goal Marine, you will see what could have been there in nineteen twenty-nine, very similar to going by, uh, Mystic Seaport. That's the effect that we hope to have, and it's important to our customers. They appreciate that attention to detail and the aesthetic. And, and so, and so do we. Um, very briefly, Greg, uh, described in the boat shop on, on the south side is where the boats would come in, and then the building is tall and skinny. Um, and it's gonna be hopefully an exact replica of one of the buildings at the Hirschoff Marine Museum. Um, with, with some of the characteristics and features that are unique to a boat shop of that era. But boats are basically tall and skinny, and the building is tall and skinny. Uh, the covered work slip is really special and unique. Um, while it's common on, on the lakes and down, um, in the south and out west, uh, basically covered work slips are pretty rare here in New England. And we think it's gonna be a very special feature, and it's gonna allow us to keep these very expensive yachts inside while we work on them. And then another special element is that Marine Railway that Greg referenced. Uh, this is a real throwback. In fact, very few places have marine railways. And the reason we want to do it, it's not, not just to be old. It's, it's really the best way to support these wooden boats when you haul them compared to the more modern travel lift, which just has a couple straps to pick the boat up. The railway allows the keels to be supported um, on these boats on their entire length. These boats are very strong for what they do, these wooden boats for racing and sailing, but they're, they're ungainly and fragile out of the water. So these are specialized facilities, um, that we hope, um, we, we'll service the boats to the way, the way they were done. Um, so that's a, that's really quick, um, kind of description of what we do. Um, I, if there's a second or two, I was hoping Brian Burdick could just speak to a couple of the buildings and the design. Would, would that be possible, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Good evening, uh, Brian Burdick, Prospect Hill Road in Noike. Um, as, as Andy mentioned, the, the, it, the vision that we have is, uh, the early twenties on the Mystic River. And we've gone back as, into, uh, historic photographs of the original casino, which is Casino Road. Um, taken that, that kind of character and some of the other smaller yards that were along the river and along the, along the waterfront. Andy mentioned, uh, the boat shop is based on an eighteen eighty-two building up at, uh, Bristol. At the Hirschoff Museum, that was the original boiler shop. We have the original drawings for both the building, the windows, the skylights, the doors. Uh, and the intent is to replicate that in, into the character that reflects the, the fine yachts that show up. The, it's, it's in partnership with the quality of the boats, and the era of the boats is the era of the buildings. The covered work slip, if you look at, uh, early photos of the post yard, which became the Mystic Shipyard, you see, uh, buildings on the waterfront with big doors that, uh, boats could get into. And so our, our idea is to, to carry that kind of vision there. And then the storage shed, similarly, um, period correct, uh, looking probably kind of, uh, outlined like the, the storage sheds that are at the Mystic Shipyard. Not as, not as large, not metal, but, uh, that kind of a, that kind of a- Not as, not as large, not metal, but that kind of a, that kind of a presentation. Cold, dark, wet, which the wooden boats love. And the, the workers aren't too crazy about it, but it keeps the boats perfect. So that's the, that's, that's kind of the vision for where we want to get to. Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything else to add? If not, I'll turn it over to staff, do you have anything? To add, Diane?
They did a good job with explaining everything. One of the things is they are requesting for the elimination of the front sidewalk along Casino Road. And also the internal sidewalks that would connect to the front sidewalk. That's not a variance requirement, that's, you can do a, um You can do an elimination, that's one of your options to actually eliminate that request, that sidewalk. So that's what they're requesting tonight for that. They did, there was a lot of work that happened below the coastal jurisdiction line, which included new walls and docks. And they received all their permits from the state DEEP and the Army Corps of Engineers for that. And I think most of that work is pretty much completed at this point. So they did receive all their appropriate permits for what they're doing Below the coastal jurisdiction line or waterward of the coastal jurisdiction line. They are placing that, um They did give us a materials management plan for how to deal with all the hazardous materials on the site. And how they were operating and working with those hazardous materials, we made that part of your, the agenda packet. And so they are pretty much keeping storing all their hazardous materials above the base flood elevation. And they are, when they're working In the storage building with any hazardous materials, the, the management plan requires them to actually You know, use them for the day and then bring them back and store them in the boat shop above the base flood elevation. So they have a process for doing that, that's pretty much written out, spelled out in their materials management plan, which you have a copy of. They did receive a lot of variances, and I think they, you saw those before when they were going for variances. A lot of them had to do it, deal with the circulation on the site. Most of them had to do with, you know, landscaping and sidewalks, parking, things like that. They are doing the perimeter, five foot Perimeter landscape area, they are required to have Shade trees every fifty feet of Minimum height of six feet or two and, and two inch caliper. They did have a landscape architect give you a landscape plan and what With showing all the existing trees and shrubs that are surrounding the site. What I think's going to happen is they'll probably go out and look at what trees and shrubs want, need to, should be saved. What trees and shrubs should be removed. And then tag the ones that are going to be, remain, and if there are some that meet that Shade tree requirement and are the appropriate height. At least, then they can use those as their shade trees, but we'll, we'll work with them on that. As far as what additional Trees need to be planted in that area, or what can be saved on site from existing trees. And there is also something in the zoning rigs that says the, the trees have to be basically protected. So we're, we're working with them to see what kind of protection, at least the trees have in that perimeter. Landscape area. I don't know if they talked about the lights that they're proposing, but they did get approval for, from the public works department To actually put the Electrical lines underground along their frontage of their property. And I think they're providing two new street poles and period type of lights that they got approved from the public works department. So that'll be right along their, their property line. And they talked about the flood protection. Basically, these are preliminary designs when they go for their building permits, the building official Make sure that all the flood requirements are being met with their design that they're proposing. And this is a, also a coastal area management site plan. They've addressed, basically, it's a predominantly water dependent use on the property. So they don't have to give any public access along the shore at this point. And They did receive a variance to allow the residential portion of the Of the property to be located within fifty foot of the coastal resource setback along the Mystic River. And that's it.
All right, and I'll turn it over to commissioners for Their questions, or I'll start with Michael Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions, I'll start with the exemption, I guess we're calling it, for the sidewalks, I would, I would be okay with that. Though I'm, I know that there's a lot of foot traffic in this neighborhood. This doesn't seem like the kind of place that sidewalks would be needed, either interior or along the road. Trash and dumpsters, I don't see anything for that, how does that handle? And then I'm wondering also, how, well, maybe if we could just address that. Then the other thing that I was wondering about is The propane tank, which is buried. I know when we did Central Hall, there was some concern then, and Brayman did some back of the envelope calculations. With regard to it possibly popping out of the ground or moving if it were flooded. And it was empty. I just wonder if, if that was considered, how that is secured? And then also, if there is a dumpster, my concern is that if there is a flood, that things aren't floating away. So I would be concerned about propane tanks, dumpsters, the hazardous material, I believe, I was told, are above the Mean high tide. Or, or just that those things are secured, that's it.
Greg, can you answer those questions?
Yes, yes, sir, Greg Fetis with Fetis Engineering. So on the, on the site plan, and I did forget to mention it, the trash and recycling containers Are going to be located in the storage shed. Basically, and I think this is covered in one of the narratives, but Smaller containers will be in the boat shop and they'll be brought over To, very similar to what they do now in their facility. We showed two trash enclosures and one recycling, the, kind of the ninety gallon containers. We didn't think about flooding, or I didn't think about flooding with those, but we could get some kind of strapping system to the inside of the Into the, the inside of the storage shed. But those will just be wheeled out like a normal trash pickup. So that's for the trash, and they're not huge users of trash, and, and if need be, Andy or Brian can go into that In further detail. I'm going to flip to the propane tank, yes, is located, we did take into account Buoyancy. Then I'm just going to flip to the detail sheet, which I think is So it's a concrete pad. Located at about mean high water. So the majority of the tank, for the most, most of the time, is going to be out of the water table. But obviously, if there's flooding, can easily go above that, so we take that into account. The anchor straps and the Calculated to hold down the tank to a concrete pad that sized Basically to hold down in a flooding situation if the tank is empty. We did account for that, that was two out of three, then the third, I think, was the, was the hazardous.
Oh, the hazardous waste, if those are secured or if they need to be.
They're all going to be stored on a mezzanine level in the boat shop. Above, above the flood elevation, base flood elevation.
All right. That's all.
Okay. How's that?
I have No concerns whatsoever, I'm perfectly okay with not having a sidewalk, given the nature of the Material you're using, and I really love the flush curb, which kind of identifies where the road is. So I'm good with everything, great project.
Barbara? Barbara Carbox, do you have any Questions? Or input?
You're muted.
Is she muted, muted, or I can't?
She's not, but we cannot hear her.
Well, so
I think that was, she's okay.
She's okay. Susan?
No, I, I don't have any questions, it's a great project, and I wish you well with it.
Thank you.
Stephen, do you have any, Steve, do you have any questions?
No, I had similar questions about the propane tank and the buoyancy of it. Steel tank or fiberglass?
Steel.
It's steel, and it's propane, you said?
Yes.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was a mention about, there was no heat, but this is for heat in the buildings?
Just for the boat shop, there'll be, and again Limited probably heat in the boat shop, but in the apartment will be heated in the winter.
Okay. All right, and I'm also good with the not putting in the sidewalk, I don't think that's necessary there. So I'm, I'm good with it, like it. Nice job.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
Just a couple, so I just wanted to support the elimination of the sidewalks. Because I was such a big advocate on Star Street, this is quite a different situation. And I just, so the answer is I support the elimination of it. But the second point was, having tried to put my boat down in this area fifteen years ago with the former True Marina that was here, which is frankly very underwhelming, and didn't have any of the aspects of nineteen twenties, let alone Eighteen hundreds or anything along the line. I've got to believe when, and I wasn't on the planning and zoning at the time, when the waterfront district was proposed. I believe the applicant here has embraced it A great deal in every aspect of what they've tried to do, and I think is how And others have said, is frankly just a great job, so that's all my comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Have we heard anything from Barbara? She hasn't raised her hand or anything. All right, I didn't
I can't hear her.
You can't see, can you see her? She's not
You can see her, she's shaking her head, but she's, she gave us two thumbs up previously, so I think that's
I just see the plans that are shared, yeah, I didn't have any additional Any questions? Set apartment going to be affordable housing, so we can We have a proposed Motion, or actually two motions. Does any, has this been given to the applicant?
Yes.
Does he have any questions on it?
I think we're good.
Okay, does anyone on the commission have any concerns with the, the motion? I have one, I, I almost call it a typo in the very last paragraph Under section four, where it talks pedestrian movement to site, I think it should have an insert to the site. And or between this, otherwise I have no, no issues with that. There are no other questions or with the motion, then I'll make a motion to approve Site plan application, SIT twenty-one Dash ten for Little Go Marine, zero and six Casino Road, subject to the following modifications and findings. One, required landscape areas shall meet the standards of section eight point one, including that all required Deciduous shade trees shall be a minimum of six feet in height and two inch caliper. And landscape areas shall be protected in accordance with section eight point thirteen point F. Two, a note shall be placed on the final plan stating Quote, all use, storage and disposal of hazardous materials on the site Shall be consistent with the materials management plan for Little Go Marine LLC, end of quote. Three, a note shall be placed on the final plan stating, quote, all buildings and structures Shall be consistent with section seven point two of the zoning regulations for flood Protection at the time of building permit application, end of quote. Four, all staff technical items shall be addressed on the final site plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission eliminates the requirement For the, of the forefrontage and internal connecting sidewalks based on the finding That there is a lack of pedestrian movement to the site and slash, or between this and adjacent Sites and a sidewalk is not shown on the town's bicycle, pedestrian and trails master plan. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Does anyone have any concerns with the motion? None Move for voting on approval of the site plan for Little Go Marine. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously, then I'll make a motion for the CAM. I'll make to, motion to approve the coastal site plan application For SIT twenty-one dash oh two, based upon The following findings and conditions. The commission hereby finds that the application is modified is consistent with all applicable goals And policies of CGS twenty-two A dash ninety-two, and incorporates all reasonable measures Which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources. And on, and on existing and future water dependent activities, is there a second?
Jeff, there's just one correction there, instead of SIT twenty-one oh two, it's SIT twenty-one ten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was my, that's my mistake.
I didn't look at that, you know, so I'll change the twenty-one oh two to twenty-one ten. Is there a second on the CAM motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion for the CAM for The site plan, all those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. Congratulations to the applicant for
Thank you, thank you very much.
Very interesting proposal.
Thank you for your time.
We have no, no old business, new business, new applications. We have two for the days and one is the Based in conversion, Wally Family, one thirty-five Gold Star Highway, and for the special exception here. Anything else on that?
Uh, no.
Applications.
There's one more application on the next page.
The page. We have a bridge view subdivision modification. Any referrals? We have a public act twenty one dash twenty nine, which is in your handout. I don't know if you wanted to go over briefly the summary or?
So since we discussed this at the last meeting, it has been signed by the governor, so it is now a public act and it is law. What you have here in your memo is the Connecticut chapter of the American Planners Association's synopsis of the bill. I can certainly answer questions about each section if you want, but I can also tell you that the areas where there are requirements, Grotton already does these things. The requirement for accessory dwelling units, we already have and we have had for a very long time, the ability to approve accessory dwelling units. And we allow multifamily housing in a number of different zones. We don't prohibit cottage food operations. We don't treat mobile homes any differently than single family homes. And we're in progress of adopting an affordable housing plan.
Parking, does that affect the changes that?
Nope. We we comply. Sorry, we do comply with those parking requirements. As a matter of fact, right now our parking requirements are are less than this, but with the proposed changes, we will be at at these parking ratios.
Yeah. Well, it just says they don't exceed, so.
Right.
Unless you're in compliance. And we have to be trained now.
Yep, you will. So I'll tell you, that is something that the inland wetland agency has had to do for over fifteen years. It's not very onerous.
Oh, no, it isn't. It's probably a good thing, actually. God will help us on that. I've or they've been pretty good on trying to come up with training.
Right.
Training on that. Does that mean we get qualification cards to? All right. Does anyone have any questions on?
Will we be notified with regard to that training or how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be developed by Yukon Clear. So yeah, we're we're all the planners on staff are on that mailing list. So I'm sure we will hear about it through there as well as from the council of governments and we'll forward those opportunities on to you.
And then we'll, oh, we have to, we'll go offsite for those or we'll do a meeting or?
It might be virtual. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's too long. Okay, commission reports, report of chair. There was another present, there was a presentation recently on the affordable housing plan, which and some suggestions of changing or potential changes to zoning regulations. Now, in that planned, does that, it it calls it a town of Grotton plan? But is it really the whole town or is it just what the Grotton Town Regulations?
It is for the whole town, but it's just addressing Grotton's, the town's regulations.
No, but does it include the city?
They're doing their own, I believe.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
What about Noank?
Noank is.
Long Point.
I don't know about Grotton Long Point. Noank is not doing their own.
So we have, so there should be a review made on the zoning regs in Noank to see.
It's a good point.
Grotton Long Point, they they can't have affordable housing there. Or is that a million dollars? If it's less than a million dollars, it's affordable.
I'll make a note and and ask Abitha to address that.
Now, we gotta make sure. I wasn't sure whether because it talks municipalities, it doesn't really say what's a municipality in the state, you know? I don't know if they defined it either. Maybe something that doesn't make sense.
Pretty unique that way.
Yeah. And it appears that the audio for the workshop got lost.
Excuse me. Yeah, we'd had a Zoom technical difficulty with the recording. So yeah, we don't have the video and and the audio that's from the Zoom meeting. But we were able to find it through the Connecticut Examiner. They had taped the meeting.
But do we know what happened? So we don't see it again because we didn't have anybody recording.
We we do know what happened.
We normally do.
But we do know what happened. It was, it's a matter of having too many people trying to run the meeting.
Oh, all right.
So we've all, so we all understand that we don't touch, we let one person run the meeting and don't touch any buttons if we are not running the meeting.
No, I, because I was concerned because normally there's a person there to record the meeting.
No, actually, we do that. I mean, the staff does.
Yeah, that's what I meant. You have a step, but you didn't have anybody there other than yourself.
No, no, we had one person turning it on and another person turning it off.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah.
I meant as a separate, usually you have somebody there to record the meeting or a meeting that we have, if it's an official meeting.
No, we do it.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, we 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 do it. We run the recording.
Yeah, but, oh, all right. But you usually have somebody that's their only assignment, right? No, when we have always had live meetings.
Oh, I think, yeah, yeah, I think, Jeff, you're referencing like the person who's taking the minutes, but I we're not doing that anymore, are we? Do you do it at a later date?
No, no, we are. It the staff member is just an attendee, so she's not on screen.
Yeah.
But she's attending.
She wasn't there at the workshop though.
She was not.
That's what I meant, that it was unique that we didn't have a separate person there for that, which I don't have necessarily have a problem with it on a workshop, on a regular meeting. It could be a concern. And then.
Is that recording considered official? That's our recording now?
That that's the recording that we have. I mean, occasionally the technology fails when we're live. Sometimes the recorder doesn't work. I think since we've been on Zoom, there's been one planning and zoning commission meeting that did not get recorded. It 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 happens.
But if we're not taking a vote, we're not really doing business. It's a lot different. I would think it's not as important.
I I mean, it's 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 a problem when you can't record, but but it definitely has happened and it's happened on meetings where appeals have been taken.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because otherwise you can't do a transcript if you need a train.
Exactly.
That's what I was concerned with. But on a workshop, that's different because there are no.
No decisions.
Decisions made. So it's not so important. And what's our next step on our M E C development? Is the applicant or the selected developer going to make a application now? That's the next step?
It 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 is something in the developers court. The the town, the commission is not going to put forward a text.
That's not, no, I I understand that, but he knows that he has to either ask for a zoning change and then an application or just take, makes an application based on the existing zoning.
They attended the workshop as well.
Hmm. Okay. That's all I had. Does anyone on the commission have any anything to report on?
No. No.
Okay, report of staff. Does staff have anything to add?
So I can see that Barbara wanted to say something, but we still can't hear you. I'm sorry.
She's not muted.
She's not muted, no. But you know what? It may be your, you can adjust your volume. Maybe your volume on your microphone got adjusted.
Mic issue.
Right. But I do have a couple of things. So at the last meeting, you had asked for an update on Mystic River Residential Care on Godfrey. So work in the first phase and in the second phase is complete. The third phase involved demolition. We can now.
Oh, okay, it worked. I fooled around with stuff.
Great. So i- in the last phase, which is phase three, is the demolition of a building and then putting on two small additions onto an existing portion of the site and formalizing the parking area and the wreck area. So the building has been demolished, the rest of the work has not been done at this point. And the site plan expired in October twenty twenty. So as of right now, they do not have site plan approval to continue and finish the last phase.
So what happens now?
So what happens now is in order to complete the third phase, they will have to reapply for site plan approval.
But what if they don't complete it?
Then I I believe it will be an issue with their state.
With a what?
Their state licensing.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, absent state license requirements, you know, we would not have any mechanism to make them complete it. We do have a bond, a sediment erosion control bond, so we could button up the site if they did not, but but we wouldn't build the additions on their building.
Oh, no, I didn't think that. So that could be a licensing issue.
Right. So we're going to make sure that they're aware that their site plan has expired, make sure the building official is aware that the site plan has expired, so he doesn't building permits until they re-up their site plan.
Is this, does the consumer protection or whoever it is that's licensing them, are they made aware of the situation?
If I can find a contact, I will do that.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, it certainly is of no value to us unless somebody knows and because it it it's been too long. As far as I'm concerned, this whole project has been a real difficult one for the neighbors and for everyone, I think. I I think that we we owe it to them to make make it happen at some point. Thank you. That's all.
Spent a lot of time trying to get things done there.
They're usually pretty good. Department of Consumer Protection is fairly responsive, so.
What's going on with the Spicer Court case, Doug?
So it was settled. However, however, with, as was noted under public communications in the New York Post, it was noted that you can make reservations for a restaurant seating. You don't have to be staying there. You can be a member of the public. So we are reported that to the town attorney. He's going to be submitting, filing a motion of contempt. So we're gonna, we're gonna pursue that.
Good.
But the other issues got resolved. Okay. And then we have the.
I don't think they did.
Yeah. No, they haven't. They haven't paid the fine yet. And this, to my knowledge, I don't know whether or not they're still using the basement bar.
They're gonna give all the commissioners memberships to that.
I don't think that's the way to go, but.
No, I don't.
Don't want one.
I don't like it would be a bribe. Yeah. Anything else, Doug?
I I don't have anything.
And you have the Blight Report.
But before we get into the Blight Report, could I?
Yes, go ahead.
My communication before my life finally am able to speak. As you know, I couldn't attend last week's workshop because I was being a tourist in very large cities in Maine, Portland and Bar Harbor primarily. And the parking situation is just astounding. Everywhere you have to pay for parking. You have, I mean, maybe if you're a mile away from downtown, you can find a free space. Everything is you have to pay. It's it's by kiosk. It's two hour parking. Even if you pay by kiosk, it's two hours and you would have to come back and and do it again. It was packed. It was very hard to find parking. Occasionally after five o'clock, we'd park in a bank parking lot, which is, I think, was is something we're trying to do in downtown Mystic is to use these private spaces. But I was so impressed with what these cities are doing to try and control parking. And and I would like to definitely see that the the traffic study that was done that we really follow through with it and and get some more ideas. Because I've really, I have paid very close attention to all the, all of the parking situations. We did spend quite a bit on parking. But it was, it was really kind of worth it in a way because I could reflect on the situation in Mystic. But I'm back and looking for parking in downtown Mystic.
Good luck.
I found in the Chelsea Grotton Bank Parking Lot.
Hopefully use the ATM, Barb.
It was after hours.
Okay. Just saying, Barb.
Barbara, how did you feel? Because I know how I feel, but how do you feel when you have paid parking? How does that change your behavior?
It i- in a way, it makes it easier. I mean, we did spend a lot of time going around and around looking for spaces as we do in downtown Mystic. But I I kind of felt good about it, you know, even paying two dollars or four dollars. You know, when you're a tourist, when you're on vacation, that's part of the whole expense of it now. You just factor it in. You know, as much, as much as I would have liked to have found free parking, it rarely happened. And that's okay. And I'll I'll warn you, going to national parks is, the traffic is awful, just awful.
But pay to play is okay. You you understand that in that game, right?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you want to discuss the next meeting? Yep. Yep. As a matter of fact, I do. So at the, the end of the day today, we received an email from the town manager's office that says we are going to resume in-person meetings as of July first.
Oh, no.
Yep. So, but wait, it will be up to your committee or board if it will be done in person or as a hybrid Zoom meeting. So if we plan to move forward with a hybrid, the chair has to be in person in the room where you hold the meetings in case someone from the public shows up. Now, that being said, I our our usual room is room two. We are in the process of outfitting it for hybrid meetings, but it's not, it's not complete at this point. So so having a hybrid meeting would literally be trying to use a laptop with with someone sitting there and then sort of moving it around for the public. So what are your thoughts about holding in-person meetings and just going back to the way it was pre-pandemic?
Anyone, Chairman?
So what a hell of people's opinion.
I I think one good thing about the Zoom meetings is there's so much more public participation. And I have found myself watching, say, an inland wetlands meeting or a zoning board of appeals meeting. I never would have gone to the meeting before. And I think that has been very beneficial to the public to have it on Zoom where where they can at the comfort of their home and listen to, watch us, listen to us, and they can participate. Whereas they might not want to have gone up to town hall. And I think that's a definite advantage. On the other hand, you know, in person, I went to an in-person hybrid meeting this afternoon and it was a little awkward. We could set up the the computer so that we saw everyone at the meeting and there were also people on Zoom. And it worked. It worked. It worked. So I, I, I guess I would go more with hybrid.
I think I agree with you, Barbara. I find that having in-person meetings almost is more beneficial for the Commissioners, because you get to see each other. You, you see a lot more from reading people than just, you know, kind of a flat-screen look, at least for me. And I think for the public, a lot of people feel a lot more engaged if they can be there in person and present whatever they want. So I think, and I think the hybrid, that might offer a lot of benefits if you're out of town or whatever. Be a lot easier to keep your participation as high as possible. So I kind of like that idea. We could try it. I guess we could always change it.
Like, the sooner you can get the, the room outfitted to actually do a legitimate hybrid, the better. Because certainly the benefits of both are there for every possible reason. It's better to have us all in the same room because we can chat with each other better and actually have better communications. So that's certainly a good thing to have. But also, as has been mentioned, be able to get, you know, twenty, thirty participants involved in raising their hands. We can never do that before. This is, this is much better to do. Having everybody sharing screens and talking about the same thing, that's a great thing to be able to do and have, and have it recorded. So it becomes part of the record. I love that part.
Yeah, so the video conferencing thing, we used to have an E B that the camera would automatically zoom in on the person that was talking. And, you know, you could record it, you could present things, you know, you could, it was all tied in together. And so I, I think a hybrid is, is, is a good compromise, but I do like being in person with you guys.
It, it seems like if we all had laptops, we could conduct this meeting just like we are right now, but with a laptop in front of us.
You'd end up with feedback if we tried. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work quite like that.
Yeah, the, the part that I find was a little bit, when we did the Star Street application, and there were so many people who were, and maybe it was just the beginning of all of this, and people weren't necessarily comfortable with it, which we had at one point, I think there were, I don't know, six or eight people who were sitting at someone's kitchen table with one, you know, it seemed like we lost the energy that you get in a meeting when a, a whole group of people can show up. So I, I'm, long story, I, I think the hybrid could, would be beneficial. And I also appreciate being able to go back and look at meetings with the video and be able to, it just works better than if I, because I would never go into, into listening to tapes like we used to do. It was very difficult to do that. So.
So, so as Commissioners, would you be comfortable meeting in person and having the, or, or are you thinking hybrid, meaning that a couple people would be in, in person, a couple people would be zooming in, and then some public would be there, some public would zoom in? I mean, what do you think, what would you guys be comfortable doing?
So if I can just talk for a second. So, um, yes, I, I think Deb, you just outlined it, because in many ways, the accessibility for us to also be on hybrid, because I know some of us travel, I spent a lot of time in Vermont and DC, is very important so that we still could ensure that, you know, we're getting the full meeting. So I think hybrid goes both ways. It goes within the Commission and also with the public. My only other point is, you know, I worked for Microsoft for a long time, and we took a long, we took a very hard line on accessibility and ensuring that accessibility is embraced as much as possible in our O S. And what I've seen in Zoom is that Zoom, for people who cannot be there in person, it provides tremendous accessibility. So in all respects, the hybrid is great. I'd also send a message back to the town managers to finish Room Two, maybe before we move into that model, and potentially, Kevin says, move to Teams rather than Zoom. So that's my thoughts.
Well, I know, I know myself, there's meetings that I would have missed without the Zoom.
Right.
So, you know, it, it does make it, we've had pretty, almost full attendance throughout this thing, which is pretty, you know, is rare compared, and also, you know, just, I know that there were times in the past when, when there might not even been a quorum, and I'd get the phone call from Jeff looking for somebody to drive up really quick, you know, so. So I, I'm, I'm for the hybrid, if that's me, but I have enjoyed these Zoom meetings. It's much more comfortable for me. I get to eat my dinner.
And then we don't have to look at you. Cheated that one night.
Smell it.
Smell-o-vision. So it sounds like the, the majority of the people are like the hybrid.
But it sounds like most of us will be there.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to follow up with. I think if you can let us know how you will be participating as we get closer to these meetings, that would be great. So the next meeting is July thirteenth. I think we do have two public hearings scheduled for that at evening, plus a couple of, of applications. So, yeah, so it'll be a, a longer meeting, probably.
Yeah, oh, try it, see what happens. It means I have to be there. It did say-
Actually, if Chairman couldn't be there, oh, no, I suppose you wouldn't be able to do that. And could the, the Chairman cannot zoom in and, and then the meeting, the Chairman has to be there?
So this came from the manager's office. This is not statute. This is what he is, is proposing. So I, I think there's some wiggle room with that, you know, as long as there is a Commissioner there or Vice Chair. And I'm sure staff would be there as well.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that would be fine. I just-
Why don't we try the hybrid and see how it works?
Good.
If we don't, can they finish? We don't know whether they can even finish Room Two.
But the, yeah, I don't know the schedule. I know all of the equipment is here, it just hasn't been installed. So it's very likely it could be.
Almost a month.
Exactly.
About three weeks away.
Exactly.
So that's a fair amount of time. So we can try it and see how it works. But otherwise, we'll meet, I'd have to be in Room Three.
Maybe, yeah.
Because the Council has, Council meets the same night we do always, or?
They, they do, and I'm not sure that they will be meeting in Room One, because that room has not been outfitted for hybrid at all.
Oh, it isn't, oh.
Oh, so they may be meeting somewhere else, maybe the senior center.
Well, maybe that's what we could do is-
Yeah.
Or is a library? Could, is that available for?
They don't have a hybrid setup yet.
They don't either, yeah. Well, why don't we try and see if we can find a room for it?
Yeah. So as of right now, we'll be in Room Two, and it'll be hybrid.
All right. Because it doesn't, does really improve attendance, which means you have good continuity too. Which can be important for those items that go on for more than one, one meeting. So if no one has anything else, Doug? Oh, do you?
The Blight Report. I would, I appreciate receiving that, and one property that I was concerned about, I'm glad to see the action has been taken. Or some action is, has been taken in this progress. But there were two other properties that I had notified Z O O about, and they are not on the list, and I am curious as to why they aren't.
If you can send me what those are, I'll, I'll ask him, or send it to, ask Tom, yeah. Okay.
Does anyone have anything else? If not, then I'll make a motion for adjournment. Second, one second. So we're adjourned at nine oh two.
Right. Thank you, everybody, and see you next.
Bye, all.
Good night.
See you all in real live view.